Good evening. We will now call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting for the City of Southfield, Southfield City Council, for Monday, July 25th at 6:00 P.M. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks.
Present.
Brightwell.
Here.
Cruz, he's here. Frazier.
Here.
Hoskins.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Madam President, you do have a call with excuse Mayor Cyver tonight.
Thank you. Will we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now have our communications. And this is the, Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Thank you. First, we have, is it Lead or Led Bell? Leo Bell? Sorry for mispronouncing your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Leo Bell. I live at 23699 Merrill Avenue, Southfield. I've been a resident for almost 35 years. I just have one brief question tonight. My wife was here a couple of weeks ago, Jill Dean Bell. So my remarks are referring to Mount Vernon. What I need to know, or the resident needs to know, is when you come to Rutland and Mount Vernon, there's a four-way stop. We used to have crossing markings in front of the stop sign for the vehicles coming down the street. They faded away, so now the cars doesn't stop at the marker. They go all the way to the corner past the sign. So if you're trying to make a left or right turn, you're in the bin of getting hit every time you go down the street. Okay? And if you go south, if you go west on Mount Vernon coming to Southfield Road, the marker in the left to make a left turn on the Southfield is faded and gone. So the cars crouch the streets there. You can't make a left turn without getting hit sometime. Also going towards Greenfield, the lines are faded out. We just need to know, can we get the lines put back? Safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sharon Cousin. I live at 24418 Martha Washington, Southfield, 48075. I've resided there for 20 years. My question is, and I did write it out and also submitted this concern online, that last year, Southfield had a national garage sale from August the 15th through the 19th. It was outstanding to see our community work together as we cleaned out our closets, allowing gray bargains to others. Thank you also for posting the addresses of homes on the website, which enabled a roadmap for us to support others that allow, that allowed this event to happen. The roadmap, still have the flyer that was sent out by Southfield. We've participated in the roadmap with the addresses that were posted. This event brought communities, community together. Each subdivision, it was not like your subdivision and my subdivision. It's our subdivision in Southfield. We're all concerned that this event has not been posted in the Southfield Sun or has not been published as of yet, and we would like to know, will this event happen this year?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Greg Keeler, resident of Southfield. Two weeks ago, City Council had a meeting in which there was a presentation about Tarmac and the Restoration Project of the Year. Somehow, we got into another discussion. A question was asked, are there any evidence of forever chemicals in the system? It is present in the northern part of Michigan, not as much in the southern part, which we are. So I'm trying to figure out, how did the word "not as much" become "no"? Those are two different words. Not as much means if it's 100%, it's now down to 10%, that's not as much. But no, uh-uh. No means no. And then it was, yes, but we have it in Farmington Hills. I'm trying to figure out, how far is Farmington Hills from Southfield? 100 miles, 10 miles, 1,000 miles away, or across the street? So I, I don't understand all, any of this. I am aware of asking if we have, if we will test the water in City of Southfield after a person asks for $60,000 for testing the water in Southfield. I just broaden the scope of the test. So if they can ask for $60,000 for money for testing, why can't I ask for it to be broadened? Why is there a problem? There should be no problem if we are asking for the same thing. And I never once said anything else but forever chemicals. So if you don't repeat what I said, repeat what I said. Forever chemicals. It ain't even a small spectrum of it. The EPA, and yes, the water is better than what it was back in the 70s. The EPA started in 1970. But at that time, our rivers and our lakes were catching on fire. Some of our lakes were so polluted, it stank. So, yes, 50-some years later, it is much better. But that is because we have the EPA. Thank you.
Next, we have Chris Cleveland.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is this on?
Okay.
I'm an employee of the City of Southfield and a member of the Technical Professional Office Workers Association of Michigan Labor Union. Madam President Taylor, I just wanted to ask if the council considers the practice of waiting until a labor contract has expired before starting to negotiate is fulfilling the obligation to negotiate in good faith?
I'm not allowed to?
It's just a question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Stacy Jackson, Southfield resident. I had two actual concerns that I wanted to discuss. The first is the number of Airbnbs that are now in our city and throughout our communities. I do know that this past weekend, there was a large one in our community that lasted from 6 until the wee hours until the neighbors called the police after midnight. I'm concerned on what can the council or what can the city do in regards to enforcing ordinances to these Airbnbs when they do rent these properties in our community so that they abide by the noise ordinances, as well as parking ordinances and noise levels and crowds? That's the first one. The second is that I've noticed that there are cities around our state that actually have been taking progressive measures in regards to pipes and septic tanks. And I'm curious to know, just to circle back, where the city is with that. I do know that in the city of Detroit, they have a process going now where they're allowing residents to pay about $5, $10 a month for insurance so that when pipes from the street to their house collapse or fails, the city has a company that restores those with no out-of-pocket cost for their residents. So I'm curious to know what the City of Southfield is doing for our residents since we've had this huge concern about this in the media and the news going back to 2016. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Keith Harris.
How you doing today?
Hi.
I'm here to talk about safety, but apologize for my family. We lost this guy. I knew him, but to hold back my own tears. My family comes into this city, destroys this city. 70 police runs to one house, setting vehicles on fire. I'm so disappointed in them, but I'm more worried about our first responders getting hurt. I'm more worried about them than maybe you are. Every place I look up, and I got a very productive family, but I ask myself, why do they deal in such dirty dealings? When I left Detroit, a house full of people were murdered because of them. And now they're here in Southfield, running for office. That house on the corner of Simoset and 10 Mile? You gotta watch that house. And I mean, watch it. This is my family, and they're dangerous. They have defrauded this city in every kind of way. I'm highly disappointed. I work with police officers every day in Detroit, but I've never seen such a lack of respect that my own relatives have bought to this city. I can argue with everybody in this city about something. But me and Stacy, we work hard to protect our community, to protect this city. And now I gotta protect it from my own. That is ridiculous. Ridiculous. I, I mean, every time, when I, when I thought, when I heard about that fire, I'm saying, how did an unrunning vehicle, four houses up the street from you catch on fire? The vehicle wasn't even running. And these same fools are running for office. Consistent issues and problems. And if, and I'm warning you, our officers sitting back there, they worth more to us than to just keep letting the same people cause these kind of problems. I didn't talk to my family till I'm blue in the face. Mental health services, it's needed. It's got to be something that our law department can do. The next run, I'm flag the house, do something. But the next time a officer go to that house, drag them into court, make the husband, the wife, both of them get the mental health services that they need because they both need it. There's kids in that house. And it's a matter of time for either one of the kids get hurt or one of the officers get hurt. Please, help this family. This is mine. Help them. And I'm gonna give you some papers on some of the, just, just crazy fraud that just go on. You gotta stop. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our communications tonight.
Madam President, we do have a update to the agenda for the, under the minutes, it would just be the special budget adoption of the minutes, not the regular minutes, just the one set.
Regarding the, the first gentleman that spoke, do we have someone that want to talk about the lines on the streets? What street was that?
It's Mount Vernon and Rutland.
Mount Vernon. Do we want to ask Lee to get back with you and then we can respond to him?
Yeah, Lee and Pat Ryan, Public Works, the striping on it.
Okay. We'll have someone reach out to you. We have your contact information.
And as a Madam President, seeing that I live in the same direction and drive, that it is a very difficult cross-section. So I would definitely love to see someone take a look at that.
Okay. Thank you. Council, next, we have our presentation. The first presentation is from AARP, the Network of Age-Friendly Communities.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to ask members of COSA to stand with me tonight. My name is Kendell Murphy. I am the Chair of COSA, which stands for Commission on Senior Adults. I'd like to start by introducing our state liaison. Her name is Karen Catherine Terrace, and she is the State Associate Director. And she has helped us out a great deal in achieving this wonderful designation.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. It's been a wonderful five years that I've had to work with COSA. And we're here to present the city and COSA with, let me get this here, with a plaque acknowledging the five-year, achievement of the five-year cycle of the AARP Network of Age-Friendly Estates and Communities. This program started, I think there's probably folks on the council and in the audience who don't know what that is, so I'm gonna do a very quick briefer on that. The program starts with city council passing a resolution saying that they'd like the city to become more age-friendly, and they want to have it join the AARP Network of Age-Friendly Communities. It then goes to the mayor, who completes an application and, and writes a letter to AARP asking to join the network. And then the clock starts ticking. The first year is all about data collection, finding out what, what, what the city, what services the city has, and then doing community conversations, finding out what residents want and need to be able to stay in the city as they age. Then the planning starts, and that is really a huge part, a huge lift, and COSA did it seamlessly. So work groups are formed, and they take the information gathered the first year from the community conversations, the survey, which is also done, and the information of what services the city already has. And they create a plan. And this is all based around what is called eight domains. Things like transportation, housing, outdoor spaces, and public buildings, communication information, respect and social inclusion, health and supportive services. Well, there's a few other, help me with the other ones. Oh, I did that one already. Well, there's eight of them. I always forget one or two of them. Anyway, so, so COSA has worked diligently. I had the honor to come and speak at the first community conversation where we had about 150 people that listened to a presentation on age-friendly and then broke into small, eight-person facilitated tabletop conversations. And we did this a number of times throughout the first year. Then they formed their work groups and came up with a fabulous plan. And then, of course, COVID happened. And like a lot of things, things, things kept going here. I will commend COSA because in a lot of communities who are working on this program, not just here in Michigan but around the country, things came to a screeching halt when COVID hit. And I want to say that COSA did not let that happen. They, it's really commendable how they continued moving forward. And I have to say that Kendell Murphy is, as their leader, is probably greatly responsible for that. So COSA has had fabulous leadership under, as I've worked with them, Karen Schrock and then Kendell Murphy. And I will say that they have a really strong, they had a really strong plan, and they executed that plan wonderfully. And I'm here to present a plaque on that. But I want to make sure that everyone understands it's a continuing cycle. So they are going to be starting, I believe, another five-year cycle, which looks a little bit different than the first one. But they have, they have the motion, they have the momentum, and I'm sure they'll do a great job. So Kendell, I gave you this plaque, and it says, "The City of Southfield, Michigan, a member in good standing of the AARP Network of Age-Friendly Estates and Communities and successfully completed a cycle of improvement and is recognized for its age-friendly leadership achievements and continuing commitment towards being a liberal community for people of all ages."
So before we conclude this presentation, I just want to give thanks to several folks. First of all, to standing behind me, we have Erlene Trailer Neal. And Dr. Latina Denson. They are also members of our 10-person COSA group. I also would like to thank, there's lots of people in the audience who have participated in our, on our commission as volunteers. Greg, for one. I think Essie Harmon out there. I don't see anybody else. But I also like to thank Rhonda Terry, who's also the city liaison for us, as well as you all. Many of you have attended our community conversations, have supported us in many ways. Michael Mandelbaum has always been a great supporter, right from the beginning. He's actually the person who got me involved with COSA. Councilwoman Nancy Banks, she is our champion. So she comes to many of our meetings and gives us lots of counsel and helps us and helps move things along quite a bit. And I'd also like to thank Mayor Ken Cyver. He looks over our plan. He's very active and participating in making sure that, and, and looking over the documents that we're sending toward the state. He also participates on a, a panel of mayors across the state to talk about this initiative as well. If I forget, gotten anyone? Yes, I have. Parks and Recs, all of the divisions that have helped us, Parks and Recs. So that's Terry Fields, Kathy Frazier, and her staff, as well as Michael Mannion, Fred Crowe. There's just so many people that we need to include planning. If there's anybody I forgot, please just forgive me. But I'd like to thank everybody here. This is a team effort, and thank you. And again, we mentioned Karen Schrock. She started this initiative, and I will be passing the baton. My commission is up in August, so I'll be passing it to Brenda Chambers-Three. So thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations. Councilman Brightwell.
Madam Chair, if I may, since I've been on council, and Karen Schrock initially based with me back in 2016. And from that day forward, I've been a very good, very supportive of their effort to get this age-friendly plaque. So the council has been supportive, I think the whole council has been supportive of COSA.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I would also like to thank and compliment the COSA members on their hard work and dedication in putting this comprehensive master plan together. I don't know if council has seen it. I think it's on the, our internet, but they have done an absolutely unbelievable job. To Ms. Murphy, behind every successful team is its leader, and you have exemplified and led this group forward. Your positive energy, you always stayed focused, you were right on point. I was so impressed with the way you led things. So no wonder you produced the beautiful document that you did. There was so much high energy and positive forces in your room. So I really would like to say thank you and congratulations. You worked hard on this document, even during COVID. You did not let down, and, you know, it's, it's reflected by the award you received. So congratulations.
Thank you. Next, council, we have one set of minutes to approve. They are the Special Budget Adoption Meeting Minutes of June 13th, 2022.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to move that we accept the Special Budget Adoption Meeting Minutes of June 13th, 2022.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve the Special Budget Adoption Meeting Minutes of June 13th, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This brings us to our public hearing and site plan. The first one for tonight is the Economic Development Initiative.
Good evening, Council President, Honorable Ward. The City of Southfield has received a request from SLT Holdings for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for 27522 Northwestern Service Drive. It's the former Copper Canyon. This item was brought before City Council on June 13th. And I have representatives from the consulting team that are putting this project forward that are here. We have a short presentation, after which we'd like to hold a public hearing. Thank you.
Thanks. My name's Ryan Guti. I work for PM Environmental. I'm a consultant with Rebecca Lazarus, who's, represents the owner entity of the Tiger Market, the proposed Tiger Market. Thanks for having us, Honorable Counsel. So the Daybach Korean BBQ Restaurant that you're probably familiar with, that's a family-owned business, they're small-owned, a small business-owned. They're a minority veteran business. They've been in Southfield for 30 years. They redid the Korean BBQ restaurant there, right next door to the site, in 2018, and it's created over 75 new Southfield jobs since that time. That's, the interest in that restaurant has kind of spawned the ownership group to respond in a way to provide a more authentic kind of ethnic experience by proposing this market, this market. So the parcel that's, that they're looking to do this with is the former Copper Canyon Brewery that was built in 1986, and it's been vacant since 2014. We did have Phase 1 on it. We didn't find anything wrong with it in terms of environmental standpoint. And then it was included into an existing PA 210 district back in 2017 in August. We had the site looked at with a master assessor, and it was deemed functionally obsolete back in 2021. So what are they gonna do there? So the existing building is 9,400 square feet, about that, and they're gonna kind of turn that into an international Asian culinary marketplace. Kind of think of Nino Salvaggio's but with an Asian flavor. They're gonna add on another 5,000 square feet under the back of it for more floor space. They're gonna use All Energy Star compliance, you know, with French doors and aisles and maximum, you know, width for aisleways and stuff, and the LED fixtures and parking areas. They're gonna put... And the LED fixtures and parking areas, they're going to put garage doors out in the front of it so when it's seasonally good, you know, they can open that up and have an interface, you know, with the outdoor market kind of feel. They're going to put some media stations in there for electric vehicles. They're going to put some functional landscaping in to kind of help reduce the area from stormwater impacts. They're also going to be landscaping along the Northwestern Service Drive to kind of be cohesive with the next door of the restaurants. You'll see a pathway, some art display, a go down, things of that nature. And they're going to convert 16 unused parking spaces into a green space and they're going to create an outdoor seating amenity that can be used by both the restaurant and the market. So it's over $6.3 million of total investment. If you've been by there, you've kind of starting to see kind of the frame and the construction kind of going up on the existing building, which is exciting. They're looking to have this done by November. And then their preliminary estimate is going to be about 51 jobs that they're looking to create to run this market. The existing taxes that will continue to be collected, even when the abatement's in effect, would be about $20,000. And that's just kind of a very basic mock-up of the, you know, how the store is going to sit on the property and then, you know, some of the landscape and some of the other features that are going to be added to it in terms of landscaping and green space and things of that nature. That's the end of our presentation.
Comments? So the clients are, the company is asking for a five-year commercial exemption. As you'll remember, we have had a flurry of requests for PA 210s. City council had asked that we extend offer five years with the company willing or able to come back in the fifth year. If they could show a need and that there's, that they fulfill their obligations and they're going to do more, then they can come back and request an additional five years. Again, that's up to city council to offer an additional timeframe. So at first, so we are looking for a five-year request for this property. And you'll note that they have started the property and the work. The state does allow for a six-year look back, a six-month look-back timeframe. So they, they did start the work, but it's in accordance to the state requirements. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. I'd like to declare this public hearing open. For anyone that would like to speak to this topic, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Counsel? No questions? Okay. Are we prepared to vote?
I would also just like to add that there is an agreement that the company will be signing should they not fulfill the obligations that the district would be dissolved. And that's another requirement with the state and with the city.
Okay.
All right. Madam President, I will, if, I will move to approve these Economic Development Initiative for the SLT Holdings LLC for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate under PA 210.
Support? It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of the Economic Development Initiative, application from SLT Holdings LLC for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate under PA 210 of 2005, as amended and presented here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We're waiting for our planner. The next item is a postponement request from Middle Point for the ODD amendment to a date certain. I believe it's September 25th.
19th.
I'm sorry, September 19th, 2022.
Are you looking for a resolution or a motion?
Yeah, I'm looking for a vote, I mean, for us, yeah, a motion.
Okay. Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to request that PZR ODD 22001, Middle Point ODD amendment, be postponed to the September 19th, 2022 regular council meeting.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, to approve the postponement of PZR ODD 22-0001, Middle Point ODD amendment to a date certain of September 19th, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam President, I'd like to make a
Councilman?
... Had someone that was in this organization that was why?
Yeah, if I may, Madam Chair, to Councilman Frazier, Mr. Hassan Jawad is here this evening, if you do have questions for him.
Good evening, Hassan Jawad, Middle Point Investment Group. We are just wanting to make sure that everything we put before council is complete and thorough and is accurate as it can be to what the end plan is going to look like. We had anticipated that we would be ready with the original postponement and we were, we were not, we ended up needing a little bit more time. So the wheels are continuing. Is that better? Is that any better for you? Okay. So, no, we just simply said that we wanted to ensure that what was put before council was as accurate as possible to the end plan. And we thought we would be ready by this date, which we are not, which we apologize for. But we are requesting to be moved to September 19th.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. We had a motion and I believe
It was already a vote, it was already in place, so that was just after the fact. We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have PZR 22-0001, the rezoning request of Kiwi Hospitality Detroit LLC.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is PZR 22-0001, that did come before council a couple of weeks ago. This is for a rezoning of 1.41 acres of property located 26620 Franklin Road, east side of Franklin between Swanson and West 11 Mile. The proposal is for rezoning from B3 General Business to OS Office Service to allow for the conversion of the existing five-story hotel to an existed living and memory care facility. The property currently zoned, as I noted, B3 General Business. You can see the area shown in the light blue that notes the proposal before you for that section of the existing property. The property is also located within the Technology Corridor, which is up and down Telegraph Road. So the existing conditions, so what we are focusing on is the existing five-story hotel that is on the west side of the property. If you recall, this originally came before you a few years ago as a potential for La Quinta Hotel. That has since gone away. And due to market conditions, the proposal now is for assisted living in a memory care facility, which you could not do within the B3 General Business. So we did have to look at a rezoning to OS. Again, this kind of gives you the indication of the proposed rezoning and what it encompasses. Proposed site plan, and that will come to you at another time should council approve this rezoning. And with that, we do have Mr. David Dowling this evening, as well as the operator of the facility, should it be approved by council.
Hello.
Hello.
Honorable Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for hearing us on this site plan rezoning for an 85-unit senior assisted living facility. My name is David Dowling, owner of Yukon Building and Land Development. We're seeking a plan approvals for the senior assisted living memory care facility located at 26620 Franklin Road, 48033. This existing five-story property was part of the Best Western Premier, now operating a 256 hotel, restaurant banquet, and conference facility. The new memory care facility is entering off Franklin Road. It's totally independent from the existing hotel. The building will be rebuilt with a new electrical, plumbing, sprinkler, fire system, HVA system, meeting all requirements, state, federal codes, state-certified facility. The property will be owned by the same owner, the hotel property, that's operating by the local operator. Each room is private with a full handicap. All rooms have caregivers, sinks locations, closets for the residents. All rooms are built and set up with Wi-Fi connections and smart TV systems. The five-story building will have a newly constructed 5,000-square-foot dining and kitchen facility operating to provide breakfast, lunch, dinner for residents and staff. The main dining seats 75 people. The kitchen and dining are attached directly to the existing building. There's also on each floor, for residents that are more restricted, the accommodations for eating, lounging, and there's libraries on each floor. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I have to open it up to the audience first.
Okay. If you have any answers or questions for Marty, he's the operator, you want to do that later or do that now?
Later.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. I'll now declare the public hearing open for PZR 22-0001, the rezoning request for Kiwi Hospitality. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed.
If I, if I may through the chair, just as a reminder to council, what we are looking at today is just the rezoning only, not the site plan. That will come to you at a later date. So again, just looking at the rezoning and whether or not this property should be rezoned for this potential use. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, Councilman Brightwell?
I might have asked this before when it was here. And I do know that obviously we have an aging population, so there's a, there's a need for that. But has a market study been performed on this particular location and for this particular reason?
Yes, it has. Actually, I gave it to planning a couple of weeks ago. It was done in June of 2021.
Okay. And obviously, it came back positive from a standpoint of this use? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. To the planner, I just want to confirm, on the picture that is displayed, we're talking about rezoning the baby blue area?
Correct.
Okay. And then to the right of that and next to, you've got two hotels, correct, that are joining this property?
Yes, there are, actually, it's two types of hotels. It's all running under the same banner, Best Western Premier. There's a 16-story tower and then there's a two-story executive suite, 52-unit executive suite. That's all in that brown area. The building, the outbuilding is the five-story building that's around the blue area.
Because I think with the original plan, it was proposed that this was going to be like a long-term stay hotel, not a memory care?
Not a hotel or facility.
I mean, originally, when this, we're talking several years ago, when this prop-
Actually, so many years ago, it was a La Quinta, is what we came in as a hotel.
Okay, yes.
And we built on the front side of that and the management and marketing, whatever people involved, it didn't go through. Then we came through a few years after that and we were going to add to the executive suites, the 52 units, and the marketing didn't provide for that.
Okay.
As far as the use of the rooms.
And did you say the, the main dining room seats five people?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Didn't hear that seven, I apologize. And then who and what is the name of the company that will be operating this independent facility?
If you can answer that one, Marty.
Core Senior Care.
Do they have any other locations in the city?
Actually-
Or not in the city, in the state of Michigan?
Actually, we own and operate a 54, bad, 54 private room community in Royal Oak. And we're the, we're the owners and we operate that community. They've asked us to operate this community in the same, in the same manner as the one we currently operate.
Okay. Thank you, I believe that was stated last time, so I apologize. Okay, that was all, I just wanted to confirm the rezoning was the blue area. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, did you want to add anything else or can we vote?
I have, no, I have nothing more at this time.
Okay. Counsel, are we prepared to vote on the rezoning only? Councilman Brightwell?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the rezoning of 1.41 acres of land from B3 General Business to OS Office Service.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, to approve PZR 22-0001 rezoning request of Kiwi Hospitality Detroit LLC to rezone the 1.45 acres of land from B3 General to OS Office Service as presented here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, we need to introduce an ordinance. Ordinance number 1755.
Madam President, I move that we introduce ordinance number 1755.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Frazier, to introduce ordinance number 1755. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the postponement request for EZ Mini Storage ODD amendment to a date certain. And I'll let-
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So this particular item, the EZ Mini Storage, did come before council a couple of weeks ago for an amendment to the existing ODD agreement. What we found was that there was an error in the notice that went in the newspaper, I'm sorry, to the public. That notice stated that the meeting would be held on Wednesday, July 25th, and not Monday, July 25th. After my consultation with the city attorney, we decided the best thing to do would be to re-advertise to the property owners with the proper day being a Monday, instead of noting the Wednesday along with the new date, in that being August 29th, 2022. That would be the next time in which the petitioner would be able to come before the city council for a final review. So what staff is asking for this evening is a postponement of this item to the August 29th, 2022 council meeting. In the meantime, we will advertise to the public with the proper date.
Thank you. Counsel?
Madam President?
Yes.
To the planner, is it mandatory that you, when you advertise, you advertise both the day and the date?
Yeah, if I may through the chair, it is not. All that the requirement of the state is, is that you say the day or the date, the time, the location, and what would be discussed. So in essence, we do not have to put Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We can just put the date down. That's my understanding.
How often does this become confusing and we have to change the way we do business?
I'm sorry, I missed that, sir.
I said, how often does this happen that-
I said, how often does this happen that we put the wrong day or date down, well, not date, but wrong day down, and have to postpone something so that we don't do it when we think we're going to?
Yeah, so if I may through the chair, we use a similar template for the planning commission as well. And when the notice was originally done, it had a Wednesday, and then whatever the date was that the planning commission was meeting. When that notice was then used to, in order to advertise for the council, instead of changing the Wednesday to Monday, changing the Wednesday to Monday did not happen, and that's why we had the issue.
Okay.
Okay. Are we prepared to vote on this postponement?
Madam President, I move that we approve the postponement of PZOOOD 22-0003 for the EZ-
Support.
-Mini Storage. I'm reading too slow today, huh?
It's been moved by Councilman Bright, I mean Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval to postpone PZR ODD 222-003, EZ Mini Storage ODD Amendment as presented here tonight, to a date certain of August 29th, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is PZTA 22-0002, the council-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This item was also presented to the council a couple of weeks ago by city planner Crowe. This is a text amendment for what we're calling Mixed Use Corridor District, or MUCD. It is very similar to our current ODD, Overly Development District, as well as our RUDD, our Residential Unit Development District Guidelines and Standards. This one in particular focuses on certain corridors within the city, which include 12-Mile Road, 10-Mile Road, and then the corner of 9-Mile and Loser Road. And the whole idea behind it is to permit moderate density, multiple-family residential uses, with small-scale commercial uses on some of the properties that are underutilized or are very shallow lots along these particular corridors. So again, it encourages the use of land in accordance with the character and adaptability, and acts as a buffer between adjoining non-residential and residential areas to ensure development of compatible in-use scale. Design encourages land use planning, providing housing, employment, walkability, traffic circulation, and recreational opportunities. I'm going to show you a few maps of the areas in which we are looking at for mixed-use development. This is along 12-Mile Road, and this stretches from Greenfield Road to actually just west of Evergreen Road, both sides of the street. This is 10-Mile Road. Again, we're going from Greenfield to just east of Evergreen Road, and then the corner of 9-Mile Road in Loser Road. We did take a look at various, what we'll consider mixed-use development corridors or districts in and around our area. This is in Northville, so what we're looking at is you can see how the distance to the property lines, at least the front property line, for these particular developments. This is commercial development. This next one is actually a housing development. Actually, I believe there's a large number of units. You can see from the top image that not only they along the roadway, but also there are some units that are actually inside the property as well via private road. In Wixom, this is on Wixom Row, on Pontiac Trail, just east of Wixom. This development has actually been in place for a number of years, and is a mix of various commercial-type uses, restaurants, office, and so on. It also is right generally, right next to their large green space, which the city of Wixom owns. They regularly have concerts in the park in that particular area during the summertime. And then this is in Wald Lake, this is live-work units. And you can see by the bottom right-hand image, the development of office space or commercial-type uses are on the bottom floor. Then there's a bit of an alcove that leads then to the upper floors, which then are the residential units. So again, what this at least provides us is another, what the city planner likes to call another tool in the toolbox, to provide opportunities for underutilizing some of these shallow properties along some of these corridors for redevelopment. I will tell you that we have gotten a lot of interest from people who are excited about the potential for this, and we anticipate at least two projects coming in, should this be approved by council, at least two new projects coming in that would utilize this MUCD for redevelopment of some of these properties. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I will now declare the public hearing open for PZTA 22-0002, the council-initiative zoning ordinance text amendment. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to this issue, please come forward. All right, seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. Jeff, I'm very much supportive of this. The question I have is if other areas in the city, if we determine that other areas in the city would fall into this category or could use this zoning, would we have to then go through the entire process again, or can they be added as we see fit?
Yeah, if I may, we felt that at least these corridors were a good start, but if there are additional areas that do become maybe favorable for this particular development or this particular type of district, we would have to come back before council to add those areas in. If you recall, just recently, we had a property at 27400 Northwestern, the old plant Moran Building, that originally was not part of the Northwestern Highway ODD. They had to come back before council in order to add that property, in order to take advantage of that particular district. So that is what would have to happen, is we would have to come back before council and then amend the mapping to include other areas within the city. But we thought that this was a good start.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Jeff, I'm also supportive of this, and I can see the benefit to it. But in your planning, in your discussion and or laying this out, did you or the commission or planner, can you give us a estimate of how much this will improve, how much we will get new stock here that there will be taxable?
We didn't get that far, sir, so I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yes. Two of the three locations that you talked about are frontage on county roads, 10 and 12 Mile. Do we have to get any kind of a clearance from the county for that, or do they only do the road surface?
Yeah, the only way the county would be involved is if there's maybe an additional curb cut, where there isn't one right now. So that would be the only way that the county would be involved, would be if it was within their particular right-of-way.
Okay, the other one, the presentation was made by planner Crowe. See, if I'm remembering correctly, he said something about some may have as little as a three-foot setback, where normally we have more than that in our land use. Did I hear correctly?
Yes, you did. And part of the reason for that is because some of these are very shallow lots, that we did want to provide up to possibly within five feet of the property line or zero setback. One of the reasons behind that is because, because of shallow lots, we want to be careful how close we get to the residences that would be adjacent or behind these properties. So we wanted to make sure that we had enough space, enough buffer between the two, so as not to feel like we're maybe impeding on those residential districts.
Now, are we only talking about the rear light setback or front?
We're talking about front yard setback. Yes, we're talking about front. Now, the site plan then would regulate the rest of the setback requirements. That's similar to what we do with the ODD, and very similar to what we do with the RUDD, that we focus on the front yard, and then the site plan then regulates the balance of the setbacks.
Okay, supposing there are empty lots in between buildings that are already there, is there any setback site, side yard setbacks on these, or can the builder build right up to a building that's already there?
Yeah, so again, it's based on each individual development. We want to make sure that we provide enough flexibility here, that we can get good quality development without hampering a developer on certain widths. So the only thing that we were looking at regulating was the front yard only, and again, the site plan then would set the setback on the sides.
Okay, will that interrupt trash pickup at all? Seems to me that if there's no front yard setback, that when trash pickup day is, we'd have to have something like an alley behind there so that the truck could get down behind it, if the buildings are that close together.
I would say generally, sir, we would anticipate that, like other commercial developments, that there would be probably a dumpster or some other means of picking up trash, not in the front yard, but then would be in the rear yards.
So we would have sort of an alley, or there wouldn't be a named street or anything, it would be an alley behind it?
No, there would be no alleys. It would be, if we're looking at a residential development, you'd have parking lots or driveways in the back of the property, and then that's where dumpster locations or potential trash pickup could happen.
Yeah, I guess I'll wait until someone comes along and wants to build something and ask the rest of the questions. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I think I understand the 10-Mile and the 12-Mile corridor, but I'm looking at the 9-Mile map, and the corners that are displayed there, I think for the most part are pretty developed. And just looking at the visuals that you presented from the other communities, are you referencing the dots that are on here possibly as far as development, or just anything in this area?
It would be, yeah, would be anything within the area, the area that's kind of in that shaded tan or pink area.
I mean, because it's like you've got, I think, a Walgreens on one corner, a bowling alley on another corner, a grocery store. You're saying you're going to go up above that?
Yeah, Bower Creek Woods is down the other corner.
Right. No, that's 9-Mile and, isn't it 9-Mile and Loser?
This is 9-Mile and Loser, yeah.
Yeah, you got the golf course there.
Golf course is not included.
No, no, I know that. I guess I'm just confused why this corner was selected. It just doesn't seem like it makes sense compared to the other two. I don't know.
Well, I mean, when we did the maps, we looked at particular areas that would be suitable for redevelopment. We felt that these particular areas, we have, one of those properties, I believe, is a vacant property. Again, we're looking for opportunity to increase density, and then provide for other development opportunities, and these properties seem to be the ones that would be eligible.
Okay. To me, this corner just doesn't make sense, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Councilman?
I'd like to move the approval of PZTA 22-0002.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of PZTA 22-0002, the council-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Title V, Zoning and Planning, Chapter 45, as presented here tonight. Counsel, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have an ordinance to introduce.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1756.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frazier, for the approval of the introduction of ordinance number 1756. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we will have our agenda items for discussion and/or action, and the very first item is the authorization to purchase replacement vehicles for the police department.
Thank you, counsel. With me, I have Sergeant Snyder of the Southfield Police Department. He is the fleet supervisor and coordinator. Will we come before the city council for tonight is the request to purchase replacement for, sorry, Chevy Tahos at a cost of $39,909 apiece. We're looking for seven of them. They will be outfitted with existing equipment. That means we take the lights, the sirens, and take them off the vehicle they're replacing, and put them on there. There is going to be a small charge for work on the decal-ing, but that can't be estimated at this time, because each individual vehicle gets decals in a different way, depending on if it's a supervisory vehicle, a undercover vehicle, or whatever. We are asking to purchase it through the My Deal Purchase Contract. The total amount would be $279,363,000. It is budgeted in the Motor Pool Revolving Fund. And again, it will be through the My Deal, and they will be from Berger Chevrolet of Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Will these seven Chevrolet Tahos be replacing seven other Chevrolet Tahos?
Yes, they will be.
Okay. And then has this dealer in Grand Rapids, Michigan, agreed to hold this price? We're not going to come back and say they've increased it like 10,000 per vehicle at a later date?
Because squads are more of a, I don't want to say disposable item, but they're more common, unlike a manufactured truck, these things have already been manufactured, so we shouldn't see any extension in price.
And there's no problem with reference to like the chip shortage as far as the inside and what our officers need? Because it just seems like there's such a shortage of vehicles because of the chip shortage.
These are some of the vehicles that manufactures, because the fleet programs, especially the police fleet programs, are such good money makers. I don't want to say they take it from the regular commercial and use it on police vehicles, but they take it from regular vehicles and use it for police vehicles. So they are already in, they already exist, unlike other equipment we purchased.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Are these, any of these take-home vehicles, or are they general-use vehicles?
They're all patrol vehicles, so they're not take-home.
For me?
They're all patrol vehicles.
Okay. But how long does one of these cars last?
It really depends on usage, and also, a lot of ours, unfortunately, a lot of the ones it's replacing have been damaged in accidents and totaled, because we're an active, we have an active police department. I can't give you an average year, but based on the new fleet management- I can't give you an average year, but based on the new fleet management software we have, they give a general estimate of how much longer the vehicle has. And again, it's based on where, based on usage, and, you know, based on what happens to the vehicle during its lifetime.
Have you, has the police department determined that the Chevrolets are the better of the manufactured cars or is that's just what's available right now?
So we like the Chevy Tahoe because of the size. It allows the, for the equipment. And we have a mix of Explorers and Tahos. Right now, we have more Explorers than we do Tahos. So we're trying to even it out so that as they get shifted out, we would, we need the Tahos right now.
Okay.
As opposed to the Explorer. Those are the two patrol vehicles that we're primarily buying right now.
Okay, now, I presume that the rear doors are a little bit larger that, so it's easier to get people in and out of there that aren't used to a, well, I don't want to say behaving nicely, but...
Yes, sir. It's easier than a Crown Vic.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Yeah, just a quick question. You said there was a software that determines when it's time to replace the vehicles?
Yes.
So it's just, you said wear and tear, normal wear and tear, stuff like that. It's not like we use the vehicle for five, three years, five years, or something like that, then it's time to get a new one?
Normally, again, it's more of a how many hours it's in use because a vehicle such as this maybe start and stop. And it's, you know, a heavier use of it than just you and I driving to work. It's, the acceleration goes on it. And, you know, the trans are usually the first to die. So that's what we monitor a lot with the police squads. And that's why I can't give you, well, after 3,000 or 30,000 miles, it automatically gets switched out.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Patrick, and I know, has that fleet management software come in already? And then we approved it, what, this month or last month sometime?
We approved it, I believe, the beginning of July. And we're just finalizing the contracts between both legal staffs. And now that we've got, in fact, Attorney King sent us that everything is fine on their part, or on our part, now they need to sign. Once they sign, we then work with IT for the installation. So it hasn't been installed, but it is ordered and waiting for installation.
Okay. Well, fleet management is of interest of mine, as you probably are aware.
Yes.
So once we get it in, I probably want to come visit with you and your staff there because I have been, since I've been on council, been interested in the number of vehicles and the quantity of vehicles and the quality of the vehicles that we've purchased because that's a major cost, cost item. So I will be in touch once the software get into play so I can probably get a tour.
All council members are more than welcome to come down to our shop and to mingle and ask questions.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Not at the same time?
No. Unless you declare a meeting.
Any other questions? None? Okay, counsel?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the approval of the authorization to purchase replacement vehicles for the police department as presented.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Frazier, to approve the authorization to purchase replacement vehicles for the police department as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have the receipt of bids on printing of the 2022-2023 Parks and Rec Activities booklet.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be fielding this item for the Parks and Rec Department. We are requesting authorization to retain Indiana Printing and Publishing out of Indiana, Pennsylvania to publish 39,000 issues of our Parks and Rec Activities booklet, three seasons, fall, winter, and summer. The, we received two bids. The low bid was from Indiana Printing and Publishing out of Indiana, Pennsylvania, for a total of three issues of $34,399, plus 5% overrun at $1,678, mail sorting at $1368 for a grand total of $35,765. We're asking counsel to authorize this expenditure for the publications for this fiscal year.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions? Councilman Brightwell?
This is a very interesting bid. Why, what's the, why the disparity in bids? Is this second company?
The disparity in the bids for ACU Far?
Excuse me?
Are you, the disparity in the bids?
Yes.
I, their bid was three times higher.
Yeah.
And the 34, the number 35,767 has been consistent what we've been paying in the past.
That did lead right into my next question. I think, in essence, I remember this company, I remember the name. So we have been using them historically in the past.
Who, Indiana Printing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, okay, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, counsel?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the approval, the receipt of bids for printing of the 2022-23 Parks and Recreation Activities booklet as presented.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve the receipt of bids of printing of the 2022-23 Parks and Rec Activities booklet as presented here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have our approval of lease renewal with Verizon Wireless.
Yes, good evening, Madam President and Counsel. What I'm presenting you tonight is seeking your approval of the renewal of a 25-year lease with Verizon that just expired. You're probably familiar with the cell towers. And we have several throughout the city that I'll be working on for the next two years. But nevertheless, this particular tower is in the back of our campus. It's right by Park Services. So the history, of course, of that tower is in 1992, that a tower was constructed after we entered into an easement agreement with the county. Once we entered into that particular agreement, one of the terms of that agreement is that they would be allowed to sublease spaces on that tower. And so that's exactly what happened with Verizon in 19, I want to say, '97. We entered an agreement with Verizon after they consulted and entered into an agreement with the county. Their lease with us is what we call a ground lease because while they have equipment on the actual tower, they also have equipment. And there's a small shelter that's right at the base of the tower. That's our property, so they had a ground lease with us for 25 years. In December of 2021, they reached out to us because it expired, the 25-year lease, in March of 2022. As we started to negotiate and worked closely with administration, we also noticed another term was that they were to pay for the electrical use. And once we started talking with their attorney and took another month to find out they never paid, and whatever reason, unbeknown to our office and administration, the city did not enforce that term. So then we spent another month working with our engineering firm, HRC, working with DTE, calculating 25 years' worth of electrical use. Therefore, we reached an agreement where we will now receive payment for 25 years of electrical use that was never received. Going forward, we will be reading the meter. It is our meter, and we'll read it quarterly, send the invoice to Verizon just for the electrical use. We will also then be entering into a new agreement for another 25 years. Basically, it's five years with four options to extend for five years. The annual rent is going to be $20,000, and every year it will escalate at 3%. So what we're going to have is a renewal to the lease agreement where nothing is changing from 1997. Everything will remain the same. The only thing now is that we're going to make sure, and we have actually set up a process where we will be able to collect the electrical use charges and bill a third party that they use of Verizon for all the utility payments. And we will get $225,000 for the 25 years of electrical use. And the $20,000 will be sent to us in annual installments. So I did attach the resolution that states everything that I just stated. If you have any questions, let me know.
Okay. Counsel, do we have any, Councilman Brightwell?
You did mention that this, we'll have a meter. Did you say that it will be our meter and we will read the meter?
We already have a meter out there. It's our meter. And so the shelter, the power was being fed from our meter. So we, they could have gotten their own meter, but sitting down with DTE and Verizon at a particular meeting once, it was very costly for them to do that. So we're going to go back to what we initially said, but we have a better plan in place. I don't know what happened from 1997 to 2021, but it cost them $225,000, and we will not let them not pay that again.
Okay, okay, I just want to confirm. We have the meter, and we will do that meter reading quarterly, you say?
Yes.
And pass the bill on to Verizon?
Yes, yes. There's a process that we have. There's a special invoice we fill out. As a matter of fact, we're going to do it in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. And this is probably not significant, but did HRC find that mistake with respect to not billing them?
It was actually internal with us. I don't know who was in charge in 1997, once the agreement was signed between the city. And at that time, it was actually Detroit Cellular.
Right.
So, you know, these companies, we had several cellular companies. So it was something internal possibly. I don't know who was responsible in 1996, 1997.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions, counsel?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the lease renewal with Verizon Wireless.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the approval of the lease renewal with Verizon Wireless as presented here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is the authorization to purchase the firewall replacement.
Madam President, counsel. Renee Nahosa from Technology Services. Our firewalls are getting pretty old now, and we have to replace them. They're coming up to the end-of-life, end-of-support phase of that product. So no more patches will be issued to that and all that. So we have to replace all our firewalls. The total cost will be $161,532.18. Any questions?
Counsel, do we have any questions?
Yeah.
Councilman Cruz?
No, I just want to know where the funding is coming from.
That would come in out of revolving.
Revolving, okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a question, Councilwoman Banks?
What is the life expectancy of a firewall? Or how long do they last usually?
We, last time we replaced them was back in 2015, so you're looking at about seven years. What happens is the manufacturer supports it only for a certain period of time and then kills it off, just like, you know, an Apple iPad or something. They only put them up for, you know, so many years and only support the upgrades and updates to that for X amount of years. Then you have to get new ones because technology's already changed usually by, within a year or two after you've gotten it.
Seems like as soon as you buy it.
Yeah. Thank you. And I'm assuming that we're, we keep updating our revolving fund for the technology because if we're talking every five and seven years, you know, there's a lot of technology in the city.
Yes. All of our revolving loan funds, we replenish them as we spend through the year. Each of the departments, if they're through our indirect cost accounting methods or if they're Parks and Rec Library or Water Department, they all contribute to equipment revolving loan to cover the replacement costs of their future computer needs as well as vehicles.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Frazier?
Yeah. Every once in a while, you hear on the news about the scammers hijack a city or business and won't release it until they pay a ransom. Do our firewalls give us that same, at least as much protection as we can, as we know for the technology that's going around today?
So the firewalls prevent any kind of external penetration into our network. The ransomware is a social engineering vector, which comes in through email or something like that, which we have email filters to block that. We also have some policies on our network to actually, you know, try to minimize any risk that we can expose on that.
And training.
And training, lots of training. It's the human factor. Yeah.
One is through people not paying attention to their emails, the other is...
It's just hackers coming in, trying to come in through that front wall, which would be our firewall where, you know, we'll have servers that actually have access through the firewall, but then we'll put them into a DMZ so they can't get back into our internal, internal network.
Okay. On my personal computer at home, my daughter has told me that if I get an email and I don't recognize the name of the person that sent it to me, don't open it up.
That's pretty good advice. It's usually like that. I'll just go through my emails if I don't look at it, just straight delete.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Renee, we spoke about this a little earlier, but I know the GSA, that's the federal government, Government Service Organization. They do, they do a lot of the technical work for the government, you know, the federal government.
Correct.
So why is it that, this is just a generic question, you know, human interest. Why are they getting involved in municipal way down in the pipeline pricing of services? How does that work?
So the GSA is more of a, the government services agency. They're a procurement arm of the government. So they go out and try to get, negotiate the best prices for all the government agencies, DOT, you know, IRS, all those three large agencies. And it goes out and then we get the, because we're a government still, even though, it doesn't matter whether it's local, state, or federal, we're still a government, we get to ride along on those contracts.
So we could just, the vendor goes along with that? So the vendor realizes that, that once the GSA negotiates something, that will be it for the, for the universe of governments? You know, even the village up to, you know, large cities like New York City?
Yeah, they can, they can use that contract.
Okay, all right.
On a specific product.
Right, right, okay. No, it's just, when I saw the GSA, I didn't realize the GSA got down into the weeds of, you know, municipal governments. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, counsel?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the authorization to purchase a firewall replacement as presented.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Hoskins, to authorize the purchase of the firewall replacement as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next, we have the authorization to purchase security camera video storage expansion.
Madam President, counsel. We are in the middle of... We are, um, in the middle of expanding our cameras that we have on our, throughout our campus and we're going to need more recording space. So, currently, we have about ten terabytes of storage and we can only store about three weeks' worth of, uh, footage from those cameras. We're looking at, uh, getting more cameras and we're also getting cameras out at the yard. So, that's all gonna be coming back and being stored. Those ten terabytes will get eaten up very, very quickly with the high-resolution cameras that we were using. So, we're looking at to get another server to hold, um, three hundred terabytes of raw disk storage, which formats down to about a hundred and fifty terabytes. Based on, uh, just calculations, rough math. If we don't expand our, uh, if we don't add more cameras and just expand our storage, our storage capacity will go up to about forty-two weeks. But we're gonna be adding more cameras, so I'm expecting somewhere between six and three months of storage, which should be plenty.
Okay. Counsel, do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I move that we approve the authorization to purchase security cameras, video storage expansion.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the authorization to purchase security camera video storage expansion as presented here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we're gonna come to the counsel portion. And before we start, I just want to wish our clerk a belated happy birthday. I think yesterday was your birthday? Yesterday was her birthday, so happy birthday, madam clerk.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Uh, and, uh, next, we'll have, hear from Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes, thank you. Um, we have two exciting events coming up in the city, um, that are interest to everyone. Some, uh, far and wide, you don't have to be a resident. But on August fourth, from nine to three PM here in the pavilion, we will be having a job fair for city positions. We have a number of positions available, um, police, fire, dispatch, IT. There's part-time seasonal, there's, there's a lot of, uh, positions available in the city. And feel free to stop by August fourth from nine to three here in the pavilion and we will, uh, you can meet with the HR directly. Also, later, there's, um, on August ninth, the City of Southfield Police and Fire Departments are holding a college and young adult night information forum. It's the, going to, they're hosting the first annual college and young adult night on Tuesday, August ninth from, at six PM here in the pavilion. It will provide attendees with important and potentially lifesaving information about health, safety, legal issues for all young adults, college students, and parents. They're gonna talk about dorm and kitchen fire safety, ATM safety, what to do when stopped by the police, um, driving under the influence, and minors in possession. Narcan training will be, uh, provided as well. So, um, anyone who has, uh, older students or kids going off to college, this is a great opportunity to get some real-life safety tips from our police and fire departments. Again, this is August ninth at six PM here in the pavilion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, this is, uh, related to veterans. Uh, the Oakland County is offering a small business boot camp to all veterans on August three. It's August the third, twenty-twenty-two, from nine AM to three PM. And it will be held in Farmington Hills, two-nine-two-six-zero Grand River. Uh, at that particular, uh, boot camp, the veterans will learn how to write a business plan, how to market their business, their resources in hiring veterans. And you will get, uh, some more, also in, info on business finance one-on-one, the very basics of, of financing your business and, and taking care of your business. Registration is required, um, but the cost is free. It's from nine AM to three PM. And if you require additional information, you can reach out to, uh, the Business Forward of Oakland County. That's two-four-eight-eight-five-eight-zero-seven-eight-three. And feel free to reach me here at City Hall and eventually need some additional information. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I just want to, uh, just let the residents know. I, I always like to remind our residents, um, about our app that we have for, uh, letting the city know about any issues that they have, the Southfield Solution app. Um, it is something that I, I find myself using oft- often for, uh, if there's issues with your, uh, having issues with your street, if you're seeing, um, any issues with, I used it recently for roadkill, um, which is, um, you know, it's, when you, if it's a weekend and you're like, oh, I don't know who to call, well, yeah, we have an app for that. Um, there are a number of things that you can use, um, uh, use, uh, use the app for, for notifying the city about any issues you may have. Um, and it's, and whatever, uh, app store you have, Android or Apple, uh, it's the south, just, uh, simply search Southfield Solution. Alright, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yes. Is, uh, Assistant Planner, still here?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to ask you a question. We just thought, we just passed, uh, an ordinance for, uh, the ODD. And periodically, we get, uh, odd-shaped lots that are too small for, uh, a house to be built on. And what we do is we ask the neighbors if they'd like to, uh, purchase that lot or some other way to dispense with that. Uh, is there any appetite for the tiny houses that we could use? It wouldn't be, the lot wouldn't be large enough for a regular-sized home, but, uh, other communities have the tiny houses for, um, for people to, to build?
Yeah, if I may, through, through the chair to, to Mr. Frazier. Um, one of, generally, when you have the odd-shaped lots, um, those are perfect candidates to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for waivers of setbacks and such. From the standpoint of an ODD, I don't know if that's the right vehicle to use in order to allow for development of these particular, uh, pieces of property. And, and again, I, I don't know the size that we're talking about or the shape that we're talking about. Uh, but generally, the ZBA is, is, is the way to go to, to get waivers of setback to allow for construction or development. But if they're really small pieces of property, um, that in essence, you really can't put a, a house on it at all that, that, um, would be livable or to be, to be able to live in, you know, generally, we would just ask, is it possible just for another piece of property to absorb that? Uh, so again, either the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, again, I, I don't know if the, the ODD is the right way to go. It's something we can take a look at, um, for some of our smaller, some of the smaller lots that, that maybe are difficult to develop.
Yeah, it would seem to me that, uh, if we, uh, allowed the, the neighbor to, to buy that piece of property that was almost large enough for a house, but not quite for the, because of the setbacks, that it would, uh, increase our tax revenue by a few hundred dollars. But if we could build a whole house on there, it would increase the, the, our tax revenue more than, than we would for the, for adjoining piece of property to be purchased and, and run in the long line.
I mean, I do know that as, as time has gone on, people are, are looking at like tiny homes, container-type homes. I mean, there, there are opportunities maybe for different types of, of, of housing units than your standard home that you're used to. And maybe something that would be better on a smaller lot, uh, versus a really large one. It's definitely something that we could take a look at and come back to counsel with.
Okay. The other thing I'd like to, uh, uh, say is, thank you all, everybody from the City of Southfield that contributed to my gift, if you will. Uh, it's one of those things that surprised me, but it just shows that, uh, you still consider me part of the team. And, uh, I really appreciate the, the thought and it will be put to good use.
You are so welcome. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Um, I would just like to follow up on, um, some of the questions that the residents asked under communication.
Sure.
Um, and I guess to our city administrator, um, Mr. Leo Bell, um, regarding the Mount Vernon Street, um, striping. I know you said that was gonna be referred to our city engineer. Could, um, contact be, could contact, excuse me, could counsel be apprised as to whether it is possible to put the striping or the yellow lines down in that area, please? And then, um, do, uh, Ms., I believe it was Sharon Teslin, um, Martha Washington asked if there was going to be a Southfield garage sale, um, event this year. Do we know if one has been planned or was it every other year or?
Uh, it's, it's every year. Um, the garage sale day this year is August thirteenth, uh, twenty-twenty-two. We were waiting to get clarification. Um, last year, that was, um, approved administratively and we were waiting to get clarification, um, if that needed to be approved, uh, via counsel. So, um, we don't have a meeting again until August fifteenth. So, just on the top of my head, if counsel would consider approving our, um, the National Garage Sales Week, this week, uh, well, for August thirteenth. Uh, last year, we did do it for the whole week. Uh, the fiscal impact was none because during the week of the actual garage sales, we did not give out garage sale signs. So, we waived the fees without giving out the signs. The signs is where the expense comes into it. Um, to date, we probably, uh, got approximately seventy-two emails and several phone calls saying that it brought it together. Our, uh, community relations, um, department also did a great job in putting the maps together, uh, notifying all of the, uh, residents in conjunction with, uh, the neighborhoods that were doing it. Um, there was conversations in regards to the language that was approved by our community development, uh, community relations last year. So, uh, we could look into that. But now, we have different, uh, technologies to do something different as far as if, uh, we don't have to do a mailer. Um, it's other things that we can do because of the short notice, uh, but we definitely can put it, um, in the Southfield Sun and we do have, um, money in our professional services for that. So, if, to avoid or alleviate any confusion, um, if counsel could, uh, support a resolution saying that we do declare, uh, garage sale day here in the City of Southfield, August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two. And, uh, throughout that whole week, uh, garage sale permits will be waived.
So, August thirteenth is a Saturday?
Right, so the week before that is the garage sale week. The actual garage sale day is that Saturday. So, last year, we did it, the week leading up into it was garage sale week.
Okay. And, so, so then you're saying, I'm sorry, I'm...
The week, the week would be August, it would start, we did it the whole week. So, we did it starting August sixth?
Sixth through the thirteenth.
Through the thirteenth.
Okay.
Saturday to Saturday.
Saturday to Saturday, correct. Um, okay, is it appropriate to, um,
Yeah, we can...
Do a, do a resolution right now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um...
Uh, I can do it for you if you, if you want the dates, we got it.
Sure, so I've got the date straight, go.
That we'll just say, uh, further, be it further resolved that the Southfield City Council approves garage sale week, August sixth through the thirteenth, approving, uh, the, uh, waiver of the garage sale fees for that duration.
In no sense.
Okay.
Support. Thank you. It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Frazier, for the approval of the resolution for garage sale week being August sixth twenty-two through August thirteenth twenty-two as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so the, um, is there a way that you, um, to our clerk, that you can contact Ms. Sharon Tesler to let her know? I'm not sure if she's still here.
Yeah, we have all our information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and then, um, Mr. Greg Keeler, he, um, um, has been talking about the chemicals in the water. Have we tested the area in Southfield next to Farmington Hills regarding the water and the chemicals? And if we don't know right now, that's fine, but if you could get back with us on that, please?
I can tell you, during this meeting, I sent the city manager, uh, a text and he's gonna get back with me and check. He's not aware of anything immediately, but perhaps another department is. So, I asked Mr. Menchkin, uh, in the last half hour if he was aware of any. And, and again, uh, to the city's knowledge, we're not a, a, aware of any PFAS.
But have we done any testing, like, just spot?
As we roll out the water testing program, one of our discussions was that we would do something random, um, and that those folks were at Wells. If you recall, we estimate we have two-hundred-and-twenty people still on Wells. You just connected, I think we got one more, one more household to connect in San Marino. So, you just recently completed ninety-nine people who are connected. That water system, like all other potable water that the city sells through Sakuwa, is tested. Uh, it, it, what we don't know about are the two-hundred-and-twenty-some Wells. And I, I, as I've indicated to counsel, obviously, I get very nervous about having a discussion and potentially labeling someone's property as having a problem, but we have no evidence of that. And a- a- again, you know, no one is, no industrial entity, no one has said there's a problem here anywhere in Southfield. I've raised the question to my, uh, building department as well as my fire department and we're not aware of any, any place where there's been a, a problem.
Okay, um, if you, if we find anything out, if you could get back with us, I would appreciate it. Also, um...
Can, uh, excuse me?
Yes.
Can I say something regarding that?
Absolutely.
Um, I, uh, listen to NPR a lot. And, uh, about two weeks ago, there was a, a piece of information that came out that Michigan has the lowest, uh, PFAS, uh, measurement of any state in the, in the country. So, we're good. But I also say that if, uh, Mr. Keeler wants us to say that we're perfect, that would be very foolish of us to say that we're perfect because there's no way to know that. So, um, we're the best that we can be.
And the, the discussion tonight about testing, I mean, what was said is, and, and what I am stating is, we are not aware of any problems. And if someone is, then, you know, we would find out eventually. But the agency of jurisdiction would be Eagle and I'm not even sure if the county's playing a role. Um, I don't even think, as we do some of our Phase One, Phase One testing's not gonna show, it, it would be in Phase Two. And you usually have to have a reason for some suspect material. You know, so, we're gonna, you know, it's, it's a, it's a new area. Uh, I always get nervous when people raise the flag about something without any evidence. And, um, I, I, frankly, I don't think it's fair to people in the community. I, and, um, so, you know, I, I think we need to be very cautious before we put some label on something.
Thank you. And then, um, to Ms. Stacy Jackson regarding the, um, Airbnbs, the Neighborhood and Services Committee has been discussing this item and I believe that we have an ordinance that, um, we will shortly be reviewing. So, um, just rest assured, we have been looking at this, looking at other communities to see, um, what their ordinance is, um, state regarding Airbnbs. But please remember at any time, we do have a noise ordinance in the City of Southfield and if any home, any resident, anywhere is... and if any home, any resident, anywhere, is creating a disturbance beyond the noise ordinance, which I believe is 7:00 AM to, is it 8:00 PM? I believe that's what it, maybe it's 9:00 PM. I mean, Phil, I mean, to our, do you know?
Yes, if I may, 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
11:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
Correct.
So, if there is any noise, please, you know, call the police department, because we do have, do have that noise ordinance in place. And then, I found it interesting that there are some cities around our state that, if I understand it correctly, they allow the residents to pay a monthly fee for a problem with the septic tank. I don't think I've ever read that before, or heard, or heard of that before, but I don't know if we have any information in the city that can be sent to me on that, I'd be curious to just read on that further. And then, there was a young lady, Chris Cleveland, I don't know what department she is with the city of Southfield, but it was my understanding that the contracts for the unions, that people have been approached to start the process, and it sounded like she said their, their contract was about to expire, and does the city practice coming to the unions ahead of time? So, I don't know where the miscommunication or disconnect is, because I thought it was opposite, and maybe I'm wrong.
There has been contact with all nine collective bargaining agreements. All contracts did expire on June 30th.
Right.
Of this year. It's not uncommon for an organization our size to have unsettled contracts, and if you recall, during the bulk of my time here, before administrator and as administrator, we had contracts that we were in some state of negotiating. We continued to negotiate in good faith. You know, I will caution these items coming to council, whether or not that is negotiating in good faith. There are rules to these procedures, and they need to be played fairly by all parties.
Well, I just didn't know if this individual was aware that their particular union had been approached, so I.
I can't speak to what she knows or does not know. I know she appeared here this evening and said there's been no contact.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for responding to those questions. Councilman Cruz?
I think, excuse me, I think Councilwoman Banks covered everything, so I have nothing else.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions, so we need, things we need to talk about.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair?
One of the things that I was going to ask, were already asked, so.
I had one more quick thing.
Sure.
Someone brought to my attention with some of our, our speed bumps and speed tables, if you're driving at night on some of them, it's kind of dark to see, and Councilwoman Banks just brought, when she was talking about the striping on Mount Vernon, is there a way we can like do some kind of paint or something, so it's a little bit easier to see some of the, some of the speed bumps?
I will speak with Public Works. I know some of the humps have a white stripe. Candidly, I don't know about the reflective value of that at night. And then, the, if you recall, we also have a speed bump on Midway, and there is to be some type of striping that precedes that, but I will, I'll discuss that with our Public Works group.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I also want to remind you that those are, this is our test pilot, so any, any concerns, any questions, any comments, we would be very much interested in hearing from our residents, so that's a very good point that you brought out. Thank you.
And Madam President, just to remind folks too, that we do have a speed monitor on Mount Vernon as you approach the, the speed bump, so you can see how fast you're going, and so you, hopefully, we want you to slow down just a little bit, but, but the point is well-taken from Councilman Hoskins, so.
Yep, thank you. Next, we have the city administration.
Yes, Madam President, first item I have is a request to schedule, to relocate our September 12th council meeting to Lawrence Technological University, as indicated in my write-up.
Do we need to vote on that? Okay, so we, I will need a vote, a motion for us to have a joint meeting with Lawrence Tech University on September the 12th at 6:00 o'clock? Mr. Zorn, is it at 6?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just a change of venue, basically.
Change of venue.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I know we haven't had a meeting with Lawrence Tech in approximately four or five years, and, and I recall, we had one with them when I was council president, but we had that meeting, because there were, well, there was a lot of, we, we were interacting with Lawrence Tech quite a bit at that period of time. So, what was the genesis for this, other than collegiality?
Frankly, just ongoing relations. It's their 90th birthday. The, we continue to operate this, our accelerator. There are a number of items that we'd like to just discuss with council, some new product and program development, just to continue to strengthen our town-gown relationship with the university. There's quite a bit happening this fall, and we're looking for more opportunities to extend relationships with the university, and we're going to be discussing their, what they're doing with entrepreneurialship. There's quite a few new programs that could benefit our residents. As a footnote, the activities of the accelerator are being utilized by Southfield residents, as well as businesses, education, training, special events, and other items to be, will be on the agenda.
Okay.
But we'll probably, those building blocks that we have in place, our career center is located on their campus, the, one of the, to my knowledge, still the only career center in the state of Michigan located on a college campus.
Okay, no, no problem, it's just that I, I know when we did it last time, it was, we were having a lot of, you know, so-called interactions throughout the months, really, so, and just as a question, not, I know we, I still remember that meal that they served us in the trustee room, so, is this a dinner associated with this meeting, or do you know?
I'm sorry.
A dinner, a dinner, I still remember the meal they served us when we had the meeting four or five years ago with Lawrence Tech. Do you know whether or not they will be serving a meal at this meeting?
I will find out, and we can make that happen.
Okay, well, it's just, an inquiry, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And I have a motion.
You make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we change the venue of our meeting on September 12, 2022.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, to move the venue for our regular meeting, to have a joint meeting with Lawrence Tech on September the 12th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, I just, usually, these items come up already. There is an indoor concert at the Southfield Pavilion tomorrow night, 7:00 to 8:30. The band is Motor City Soul, their music genre is Motown, soul, rhythm and bills, and funk holdies. And then, we have, on Friday, July 29th, one of our outdoor concerts, the band performing is straight ahead, and that's 7:00 to 9:00. We have had some fantastic summer programming on our front lawn, and every other Friday, large groups gathering and nice wholesome activity, people having a good relaxing time. So, just mark those two dates. That's all I have this evening, thank you.
Would the food trucks be out there Friday?
Pardon?
Food trucks, will they be out there Friday?
Yes, yes, they're, they're part of that venue, and we're, those are building as well.
Great.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Good evening, I have nothing further to add this, tonight.
Okay, thanks. Madam Clerk?
A couple of things this evening, on behalf of the mayor, I want to announce that we do also have the Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival, that will be August 12th through the 13th. And we do have an election, if you're not sick of all those commercials you're seeing right now, next Tuesday, so all of our 36 precincts will be open. They are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We also will be open this Saturday, from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, for issuance and receivance of absentee ballots. You will be able also to vote Monday for the issuance of absentee ballots. You would have to stay in City Hall if you were issued a ballot on Monday, and we will be open from 8:00 to 4:00, that is by law, so we can't issue any ballots after 4:00 PM if you weren't in line. If you're in line, you would get that. So, to date, we've issued out 12,936 absentee ballots, and so far, we have returned 6,232 ballots, so we've still got some undecided voters out there, so we want to make sure everyone gets their ballots back in. At this point, I would recommend that you use our ballot boxes or come into City Hall. If you don't have a chance to mail, I would say if you're mailing tomorrow, it'll probably be the latest day you should mail your ballot back to City Hall. As always, if you have any questions, please contact my office. We do have a full, comprehensive website on our city website, but it's a separate link, southfieldvotes2022.com, everything that you'll want to know about this election. And lastly, just remember that this election is a primary election, so you can only vote one party. Okay, thank you, sorry for the long-windedness tonight.
No problem, thank you. Now, Treasurer Planner, did you want to add anything?
No, Planner has nothing more to add this evening, thank you.
And we have nothing to schedule? Counsel, if there's nothing else for the meeting? Okay, all right, so there's no other business for us tonight, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.